I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, May 15th. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Tensing, Paula Cole. We have Superintendent Unowski, and I am Board Chair Christine Malik.
Could you speak up? Can we turn the microphones on?
How's that? Nope? Alright, one sec.
They're tied to the video system, not necessarily a PA, so we'll see if we can get that addressed.
You got it?
Nothing.
Talking into the microphone? Is it working?
We're gonna want them to hear it, but there's no mic.
Hi, now? Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel. We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening." We have a Spanish interpreter available, and Christina Gonzalez will explain that further on the mic there.
Bienvenidos y se necesita intérprete al español, por favor. Pueden pasar con marlinio azul, alzan la mano, por favor, los que van a traducir. Si se necesita intérprete, ¿hay alguien? ¿Alguien que se necesite intérprete al español? ¿Está disponible? Okay, se ve que no hay. It seems to me that there's no one that needs any Spanish interpreting. Oh, there are. Okay. Si hay, no los vemos. ¿Dónde están? ¿Pueden alzarse la mano? Okay. ¿Cuál es?
Okay, looks like we're set. Okay, so Board Policy 203.5 states that individuals wishing to address the Board directly during a meeting must make a written request prior to the school board meeting. The Board chair's discretion determine if or when public comments will be placed on the agenda. We have three such requests this evening from Richfield community members. So I would like to amend the agenda to include public comments by Melissa Carter, Sharah Blanch, and Jonathan from the Richfield, a parent from the Richfield STEM School. So at this point, we would review and look for approval of the amended agenda.
I'll move the amended agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, and the amended agenda is approved. So we will move to public comments. As a reminder, these are statements to the Board as a whole. There will not be a discussion with individual Board members. Each speaker will have three minutes, and when that time is up, the statement will be done. The Board does not permit allegations against individual employees or students. If this happens, the speaking time will end. So we will start with Melissa Carter, and you can go to the microphone over there, please. Can you hear me on this mic?
Yes. Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you about the termination recommendation of Ms. Jessica Martinez. My name is Melissa Carter, and I am a mother of 4th and 2nd grade students at the STEM School. We have been a part of the school community since 2012, when our eldest son Eric started kindergarten. I am not here to question the legality or grounds for termination. There are others with that expertise that will address that tonight. I am here to question how and why the documented infractions resulted in her termination rather than coaching. In her role, Ms. Martinez has been a passionate advocate for all children at STEM. Ms. Martinez has demonstrated the ability to create positive relationships with students, and holds them accountable with compassion. Our family has greatly benefited from Ms. Martinez's role at STEM. Our 2nd grade son Alan struggles with mental illness, and he needs extra support with social-emotional development. While I understand that the school's primary responsibility is for academic learning, we do not get to tell our children that the time in the building is just for math and reading, so keep it together and focus on your social-emotional issues after the bell rings. Ms. Martinez has served as a goal reward for Alan sharing her lunch hour with he and a friend, and his classmates clamor over the opportunity to join him. One classmate even negotiated lending her fidget spinner for the weekend -- I know, listen to that -- if Alan invited her to lunch with Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez has served as a resource for Alan to process with when challenges arise in the classroom, and Alan seeks out Ms. Martinez on a daily basis to show her how he is progressing. Ms. Martinez is critical of Alan when he does not do his best, and she problem-solves with him on how to handle situations differently. Alan leaves Ms. Martinez's presence with a sense of confidence that he can do this. Ms. Martinez has also supported our older son Eric, recognizing that it is hard having a sibling with mental illness. Ms. Martinez has celebrated Eric in his role as a big brother, and encouraged him to continue being a positive and caring example of Alan. These are just a handful of examples of the tremendous value Ms. Martinez has contributed to STEM. I can say with confidence that Ms. Martinez has been a major contributor to Alan's success, and I am also confident that you can easily find other stories like these. I would like to now turn to the disciplinary notices. There was a great amount of detail and care put into the time-tracking concerns specifying when and how Ms. Martinez did not comply with employer expectations. It was a single incident broken into multiple infractions. I do not agree that a time-reporting infraction should be addressed with termination. In addition, there was only a single mention with no supporting detail around "going beyond her role." Why is this? And how can one not become suspect that it is related to Ms. Martinez requesting to support her students of color by wearing message t-shirts? It is my interpretation that infractions were found that could be documented and justified, but that these were not the primary drivers to remove Ms. Martinez from her position.
Melissa? Sorry, we're past three minutes, so if you want, let me head and wrap it up.
Two more paragraphs, and I will be done. These allegations of discrimination and retaliation against faculty and staff at STEM are very serious. As a mother of children of color and as a member of the human race, I feel the need to raise my voice in Ms. Martinez's defense. As a member of the Richfield community and a parent of students that I hope will be able to continue in this district, I will raise my voice in my children's defense. And while I am sure I do not have all the facts, the ones that have surfaced do not reflect well upon our school, and it is imperative that the Board launch an investigation to determine how widespread this problem is. In summary, I ask three things of the Board. I ask that you move to table the termination recommendation of Ms. Jessica Martinez. I ask that you request the administration to reflect upon the value Ms. Martinez has provided to the STEM School, and if the infractions truly cannot be resolved through some type of coaching. And lastly, I ask that you, the Board members, delve into these allegations of discrimination and retaliation against the staff members at the STEM School.
Thank you, Melissa. So, we went to five minutes on that, so try to keep it to three if you can.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
My name is Sharah Blanch. I am the mother of a 5th grade biracial student at the STEM School. My son has attended STEM since kindergarten, and I am a Richfield High School alumna. Richfield Schools shaped who I am, and they are shaping who my son will become. Because of this, what happens at Richfield Schools matters to me. In addition to being a parent at STEM, I work in Human Resources in the public sector. I have a master's degree in HR, and attend multiple continuing education conferences each year that are focused on termination of public-sector employees. I am also a founding member and administrator of the Richfield Social Justice Community, a group that a couple of you School Board members are a part of. In my work-life, I am involved in the discipline of employees, and I conduct employee misconduct and discrimination investigations. I advise managers and department directors at my employer on disciplinary and termination processes. I'm here to discuss the termination of Jessie Martinez. Until January, Jessie had a stellar performance record. The problems began for her when she, along with other staff, approached the administrator at their school on Wednesday, January 11th, to inform him they were coordinating an effort to wear Black Lives Matter t-shirts to school on Friday, January 13th, in support of their black students. Because the STEM handbook does not prohibit clothing with social justice or political messages, wearing such clothing is protected under the First Amendment. Courts have interpreted that public-sector employees have First Amendment rights in ways that private-sector employees do not. The First Amendment protects all of us in this country from government persecution. What more could someone be persecuted for by terminating their employment? This has been interpreted so that unless an employee is violating an employer policy or a local, state, or federal law, they are free to speak and wear the clothing that they would like to at work. As the mother of one of those black students, I appreciate the effort of STEM staff to show him this support. At the ripe old age of 11, he has experienced racism multiple, multiple times. But this isn't really about a shirt, or participating with other staff to wear a shirt on one day. It appears that the district realized that this was a fight they couldn't win. Instead, they have chosen to retaliate against Jessie. Since February, Jessie has been limited in her ability to speak to staff. Other staff were told they needed permission to speak to her in her office, and a tally has been kept of staff interacting with her in her office. In April, Jessie was issued a two-day suspension for an interaction with another staff member where the staff member interjected herself and instigated an argument with Jessie. How is that her fault? She was also disciplined for asking for assistance from a coworker when she suffered an injury at work and was not able to notify administrators in her building that she needed to leave to go to the hospital.
Sharah, we are past three minutes, so I would appreciate if you would wrap it up.
Despite him being out of the building and directing staff to contact Ms. Fields, she -- for time that Jessie needed off of work. On May 9th and 10th, Jessie served those two days of suspension. She was told by an administrator not to come to work on May 11th and 12th, and later was told not to come to work today, pending an investigation. Actions taken during that meeting, including telling her to stay in her lane and reaching for her phone in an attempt to look through it. The reason Jessie was being investigated is because she communicated with a candidate for the STEM principal position, communication that he initiated. As I previously mentioned, I have worked in Human Resources in the public sector for 15 years. For the past 10 years, I have been involved in employee discipline and terminations. Never in my time have I seen someone disciplined for the actions of others. The only actions Jessie has taken that are potentially worthy of discipline are her coding her time off in March's sick time when she was not ill. Even that is questionable, given Jessie's statement that other staff at STEM do the same thing. In all of my experiences of disciplining public-sector employees, both unionized and non-unionized staffed, I have always seen progressive discipline used. Progressive discipline typically involves pre-discipline, that includes coaching and sometimes documented coaching called a letter of expectation, and disciplinary action, including an oral warning, a written reprimand, and multiple suspensions typically starting at one to two days and ending in 15 to 20 days.
Ms. Blanch, we are at five minutes, so I would like to give the rest of our group people to...
Progressive discipline also requires an employee...
This is our meeting, so you guys are all very welcome here. These are your schools and our schools, but this is a meeting of the Richfield Public School Board, and we need... It is open to the public, but the purpose of this meeting is for us to conduct the business of the district.
Progressive discipline also requires an employee to have the opportunity to correct their behavior. Given the quick succession in which her discipline has been issued, she has not had the opportunity to do so. The district jumped quickly, directly, to a two-day suspension when, in my experience, the actions of incorrectly coding her time off would result in an oral warning at most for a first occurrence. Even if the Board believes that Jessie should be disciplined for all of her actions, in my experience, these would result in, at most, a one-day suspension for a first occurrence. I believe that the district has taken the actions against Jessie because she is the only staff member involved in the January meetings regarding the Black Lives Matter shirts who is not represented by a union. This makes her an easier target than the paraprofessional and professional staff who were involved, and allows them to intimidate her by making an example of her. Even if the Board believes that Jessie's actions are worthy of termination, she has not been given her due process rights. In Loudmills versus the Cleveland Board of Education, the Supreme Court held that non- probationary civil servants have a property right to continued employment, and such employment cannot be denied to employees unless they were given an opportunity to hear and respond to the charges against them prior to being terminated. It is my understanding that this School Board is the final decision-making authority on whether Jessie will be terminated or not. The letter delivered to her on Saturday, May 13th, does not give Jessie this right. Lastly, the very fact that her termination is on the agenda for tonight's meeting is in violation of the Minnesota Data Practices Act, given that it is not yet in final disposition. As action items, I am asking that the School Board remove the termination of Jessica Martinez from the consent agenda and decide separately on her termination. Secondly, I ask that the School Board reinstate Jessie to her position effective tomorrow, and that any time off since then and all pay is restored. Lastly, I am asking the Board to launch an investigation into what has happened to be completed by an investigator not associated with Richfield Public Schools. Such investigators are available on a contractual basis. In closing, I hope you choose to ensure that Jessie has given her due process rights and do not allow administrators to make an example out of her. The message you choose to send to staff, students, and parents tonight will have long-lasting implications.
So, finally, we have Jonathan, a parent from the STEM School, who will have interpretation by Christina Gonzalez. Everybody has gone over. We will hold this to five minutes as a maximum. If we go over and if the meeting is disrupted, we will recess. Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. No voy a saludarlo muy formalmente porque pues mi tiempo corre y no quiero que me callen.
I just want to say good evening to everybody. I'm gonna greet you all formally. I don't want my time to run out.
Okay, soy miembro de Asociación de Padres de Familias Latinos de Richfield, y además pues obviamente soy padre de familia.
I'm a parent on the Richfield Latino Family Association, and I'm also a parent of a student at STEM.
Pero sobre todo soy un miembro de la comunidad que está intrigado con lo que está pasando en la escuela.
But above all, I'm a community member who's involved in what's happening right now.
Como miembro de la asociación puedo decir que nuestro principal interés es lo que se dice en cuanto a los niños.
As a member of the Richfield Latino Family Association, I can say that our principal concern is about the children.
Ya que por un lado se nos dice que confiamos en el distrito y que tengamos certeza de que nuestra voz va a ser escuchada. Por un lado, se nos dice que confiamos en el distrito y que tengamos certeza de que nuestra voz va a ser escuchada.
On one side, they say that we should trust in the district and that our voice will be heard.
Y por otro lado, en redes sociales, y seguramente Jessica no me dejará mentir, porque ella sí lo afirma. El superintendente, no puedo decir nombres, a lo mejor me van a bajar, pero voy a hacer el intento. Dice que... o hace señalamientos sobre Jessica en cuanto a que no tiene la educación para hacer un señalamiento o para pedir justicia por parte de nuestros hermanos negros.
On the other side, I want to be sure that I'm affirming what was said to Jessica around her lack of education and her defense of our black brothers and sisters. Lo tradují bien?
Como dije antes, me interesa los niños, pero también Jessica. Si el director, o el superintendente, o quien sea, cualquier autoridad viene y nos dice que confiamos en ellos, y por otro lado dan un doble discurso.
As I said before, the children are what matter, and Jessica is also important to us.
Como padres de familia, nos ha costado traer miembros interesados.
As a parent of families for the Richfield Latino Family Association, it's been work for us to bring parents to the association.
No por falta de ganas, sino porque la comunidad sabe que nuestra voz pocas veces es escuchada.
And not for a lack of wanting, but because at times our voice isn't heard.
Y si por otro lado leemos en redes sociales que el superintendente cree que las personas no estamos capacitadas para venir y exigir nuestros derechos, ¿cómo se van a parar aquí? Si por un lado nos dicen una cosa, y okay, y por otro lado leemos que el superintendente dice que la gente no está capacitada...
If the superintendent, on the other side, if the superintendent says that we're not capable...
¿Cómo la gente va a venir con ganas de querer ser escuchados?
How are the people gonna wanna come here with any desire to be heard?
Nuestra comunidad es perseguida y discriminada.
Our community is persecuted and discriminated against?
Muchas veces por nuestra condición de color.
Many times because of the state of our color, the condition of our color.
Pero muchas otras por nuestra condición de falta de estudios.
And another reason for a lack of studies or schooling?
Eso no implica que no vamos a pelear por nuestros derechos y no vamos a pedir...
That doesn't mean that we're not gonna fight for our rights.
Por otro lado, veo que el superintendente dice, en un discurso que pone Jessica en redes...
And I also see on the other side that the superintendent puts in discussions on the internet...
Que ellos están aquí para mantener contenta a la gente blanca.
That they're here to maintain the happiness of the white people.
Yo aquí no veo solamente gente blanca.
I don't see only white people here.
Veo hermanos negros, hermanos blancos, y hermanos cafés.
I see black brothers, white brothers, and brown brothers and sisters.
Entonces, si cree que su obligación es mantener contenta a la gente blanca...
See, if you think that your job is to keep the white people happy.
Le aseguro que como miembro de la Asociación de Padres de Familia...
I assure you as a member of the Richfield Latino Family Association...
Voy a visitar a cada hogar que tenga un niño hispano o un niño negro.
I will visit each home of a family that has a black or a brown child.
Y le voy a pedir, en base a lo que está sucediendo, y en base a la actitud del...
And I'm gonna ask them, in terms of what is happening and the attitude...
Y en base a la actitud del superintendente, que nos tenemos a nuestros niños...
And based on the attitude of the superintendent, that we take our children, que los quiten de las escuelas, that we remove our children from the schools.
Quiero decir una última cosa.
I would like to say one last thing.
Se dio otra historia de una empleada que ha sido perseguida al punto de tener que dejar su trabajo.
I know another story of another person who was persecuted and had to leave her job.
Ella, por razones obvias, y por la persecución que se le dio, no quiere ser...
Her for obvious reasons and for the persecution that she endured.
No quiere ser nombrada o identificada.
She doesn't want to be named or identified.
Es obvio, es su hispana, y fue perseguida por gente blanca, tiene miedo.
She's Hispanic, and she was persecuted by white people.
Si ella acepta, voy a pedirle que se presente...
If she agrees, I'm gonna ask her to show up.
Y dé su testimonio.
And to give her testimony.
No podemos seguir permitiendo que nuestros derechos...
We can't allow that our rights continue.
Y las obligaciones que tienen la escuela...
Y las qué?
Las obligaciones que tienen...
Then the obligations we have in school...
Queden solamente en un comunicado, en redes sociales.
And that the obligations at school remain only communicated on internet, through the internet.
Donde por un lado se dice que están con la comunidad...
Christine, could we allow more time for the translation, please?
Sure. Okay, go ahead.
Vamos a repetir la última frase. Puedes repetir la última frase. Y dijeron que les dieron tiempo a los demás, que quieren que den tiempo a ti también, dijo el señor al lado derecho. Puedes repetir tu última frase, por favor. La comunidad, la comunidad, ¿dijiste?
Que sí, que sí, nos dicen algo de...
You should've known you needed more time. You should've known that. You should've known that.
I just said you could have more time.
But you should've known that.
Okay, por un lado, se nos pide, como dije en un principio, que tengamos confianza.
So, it's been asked by us that we have trust.
Y él nos dice en un comunicado tan fácil que no está pasando nada.
So he tells us so easily in a communication that nothing's happening.
En la última reunión de la mesa directiva...
In the last RLFA meeting...
Pregunté que si los miembros de Richfield están autorizados para hablar con los padres de familia.
I asked if the members of Richfield have permission to talk to the parents in Richfield.
La respuesta fue no.
Their answer was no.
Entonces, ¿cómo voy a confiar en alguien que en un papel, en redes, me dice que vamos a apoyar?
How am I gonna trust that someone on the internet says, "Trust me," and we're gonna support you?
Y por otro lado, te dice, "No preguntes."
And then at the same time, they say, "Don't ask questions."
El señor superintendente, si lo que se dice aquí...
Mister superintendent, if what's being said here...
Es cierto.
Is true.
Esto no va a parar solamente con lo de Jessica.
This isn't gonna stop only with Jessica.
El maltrato a los niños...
The maltreatment of students...
Es un delito.
Is a crime.
Y lo vamos a investigar.
And we're going to investigate it.
Quiero pedirle a la mesa directiva...
I wanna ask the Board...
Que se haga una investigación con personal externo.
To do an investigation with people from outside.
Para saber qué realmente lo que está pasando.
To know truthfully what's happening.
Y ojalá puedan contestar de una vez, si puede ser...
And God willing, you can find out if it could be...
Posible, y no después que ya no esté la gente, diga, "No se pudo."
And if it could be, that way the people can say that it couldn't happen.
Porque como le dije, no vamos a parar con eso.
Because like I've said, we're not gonna stop with this.
We have a request for the School Boards. We have one more person who would like to speak, who has a written statement from the NAACP that relates today. So we would like to ask for one more speaker, and we want to be in depth with his opinion.
So, the policy states that the request has to come in writing before the meeting, and...
Didn't he also state that the director can make the decision to amend?
No, the, so the policy states that the, that the request has to come in writing before the meeting and that the choice whether or not to allow someone to speak is at the discretion of the chair. Whether the request comes, even if the request does come. We actually, we did all receive the letter from the person from the NAACP. So I, I, so I will say, there has been a lot of disrespect in the timeline at this point. I do apologize for not allowing time for translation. That was my error and I am, I am sorry that I did not recognize that. So, and I apologize for that. So, because someone right here said something and I was responding. Okay, so anyway, I will allow.
Can you read the letter from the NAACP?
I don't, I don't have the letter in my hand. I'll read it for three, for the three minutes. I'm not. This is a letter from Jason Soul of the Minneapolis NAACP. The Minneapolis NAACP recently became aware of the actions of Superintendent Steven Yunowski in the Richfield Public Schools regarding Jessica Martinez and her actions to organize with staff at the Richfield STEM School to support students of color by wearing Black Lives Matter shirts around the Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. Educators in schools across the country have identified ways to work against racism in their administration and institutions. Commendably, these Richfield teachers were wishing to do the same and wear Black Lives Matter t-shirts or all-black to stand in solidarity with the students of, of color that attend Richfield STEM. A former student in the Richfield District herself, Jessica Martinez, was excited to be able to be a part of this movement. In her own words, "As someone who went through this district as a student, I know what it's like to not be affirmed. And it's so important to me that these students feel our support of them and their humanity." Despite the dedication to social justice carried by these teachers, the school superintendent demanded that the staff not wear the Black Lives Matter shirts. Since that time, he has threatened and intimidated Jessica, presumably to make an example out of her for other educators in Richfield schools. Ultimately, he is now attempting to terminate her employment and has sent a recommendation submitted to this Board of Education to be voted on at this evening's school board meeting. Our concerns are about more than the right of teachers to wear a shirt that expresses their personal viewpoints. The follow-up actions Superintendent Yunowski and other administrators have taken create a chilling effect on creating a welcoming space for teachers and students of color wishing to raise racial equity concerns. Having open conversations about prejudice and systemic racism between educators, students, and parents is necessary if we as a community wish to ensure equal treatment for all. The Minneapolis NAACP stands with the Social Justice Education Movement and announces the actions of Superintendent Yunowski. We ask that the school board take action during tonight's meeting to preserve Jessica's future employment working alongside families in the Richfield School District. Sincerely, Jason Soul, President of the Minneapolis NAACP. Thank you for your comments.
When are you gonna publicly respond to the letter? It's a document, Jason Soul. We wanna know when you're gonna respond to the letter.
We are gonna move on with our meeting right now, so.
Response to the letter.
Who's that principal?
We will, we will respond to the letter within the week. I will give you that.
Ma'am, ma'am, chair.
Yes, sir.
You are the principal?
Ma'am.
Yep, I talked to you this weekend.
I'm not, I'm not the principal. I'm, I'm Peter Kettsey. I'm a member of the board.
My kid is in your school. And if he's not racist in your school, you have to listen. I'm not a parent of two kids. And this, I will say, the second day of school, when my kid came, someone called me that something happened to my kid, that he ate or something happened. The only thing that I want to know, who's gonna respond this? That thing is, if it was not him, why do they call me? You might help to make sure, to see who it is.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm hearing.
Who answered me my question? That was Jessica. She only, not only wants to let, every student. She is not only planning to raise Mexicans, black people, nothing. She wants to have everything the same.
So we've, we've, I think we've been.
You guys don't care about the kid, but he's right here crying.
So I think it's probably time to be.
He's crying, saying, "This is his school."
Compliance with our policy as a board.
He needs Jessica.
Okay.
Understood, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, so.
You don't, because you say, "If nothing is gonna happen to the kid." But you don't listen. You're already sitting in your office.
Okay, we have, we have allowed public comment for the people that followed the policy for public comment. Thank you for sharing your information and we appreciate all of your support of the work of Jessica. Okay, so we need to move on with our meeting and we would appreciate it if you would allow us to move on to the next step.
If you want to support Jessica, why not the social worker too?
So we will move on to information and proposals from the superintendent and superintendent update.
So I'd like to welcome you, I'd like to welcome you to Richfield Public Schools. Uh, my name is Steven Yunowski and for the past three years, I've been the superintendent of this district. Uh, many of you are here for the first time. Given the number of questions I've received over email, I'm going to try to address a number of topics regarding our organization, our leadership, and our staffing. A discussion of our district begins with our students. We're a small suburban district of approximately 4,300 students. We are proud of our diversity, including over 72% students of color along with one of the highest percentage of English language learners in the metro area. We are led by a governance-based board with a clear set of priorities and values, including accountability, transparency, and equity. They define a clear vision of equity for our organization to follow. We engage as a district in open discourse and dialogue that brings multiple perspectives to the table. We accept and expect non-closure in our work. Equity in Richfield is much more than training. While we openly engage in innocent classroom work, readily access WMEP equity offerings and have engaged in countless equity-based trainings, it's the actions we take every day that are at the core of our equity work. Equity takes many forms in Richfield Public Schools. Over the past three years alone, we have seen improvements in student achievement, staffing, leadership, services, and social justice. So I will share a little more about each of those areas. Equity towards student achievement. Student learning and success are at the center of what we do, with signals that we're making real progress for our students of color. Our graduation rate has grown. African-American students now graduated at a rate 15% higher than the state average. Latino students at a rate 7% better. On the MCA, we've seen a reduction in the achievement disparity between our highest and lowest groups of students. We've overhauled our gifted and talented programming and seen a 10% increase in the number of students of color being identified and served. We've increased and improved access to rigorous college-based credit courses. As a result, we've seen enrollment in these courses increase by over 180 students of color. With our high school transformation next year, these numbers will exponentially increase. We have implemented systemic and structural supports that have led to a 40% reduction in fails within our high school and we have interrupted systems that were not serving our commitment to equity. While we're proud of our progress, we also know that there is still significant work to accomplish in our district and around the state to attain educational justice. We will continue to be bold in our efforts to do so. Equity in staffing. And equity in leadership. We hire our staff based on talent and skills and have implemented a rigorous recruitment, screening, and hiring process. Over the past three years, our staff diversity has grown significantly due to our efforts to proactively recruit a staff that reflects the diversity of our students. District leadership team has grown to 25% leaders of color. As of next year, half of our principals will be leaders of color. Our leadership team contains a level of diversity and broad-based perspectives that is rarely seen in school districts and is highly valued. We believe Richfield Public Schools to be the only district outside of Minneapolis and St. Paul to offer the combination of an African-American female leadership at the assistant superintendent and high school principal levels. Each was recruited for their award-winning leadership that they have been providing on the urban north side of Minneapolis. While our staff diversity is above Minnesota average, we know that it is still not enough.
What about diversity in the school board?
Dedicated.
What about retaining staff of color?
Dedicated to grow these numbers, we have engaged in multiple recruitment efforts, international teacher exchange programs, launched partnerships with colleges and universities, and begun work to grow your own programs. We'll openly and transparently share that we need to do better in this area and will continue to focus on our improvement. We provide funding towards outreach workers, a position that aligns with our values and outreach workers are present in every school. In the past three years, despite reductions in staffing in most other areas, we have added two additional outreach positions to a group that now totals 11, all of whom are staff of color and led by a Spanish-fluent Arabic director. Equity in services and in social justice. We value and celebrate social justice in our organization for both our staff and our students. We believe that the most important social justice activity in our school district is to ensure that our students are thriving and learning in every classroom, every day, and that they feel welcomed and affirmed for who they are and what they believe. We have provided a wide range of services and advocacy supporting our students and families.
If you believed that, you would've left the school in the Black Lives Matter.
Over the past three years, we have opened an onsite health center providing health services to all children, birth to 21, who are students or children of Richfield. We have expanded our food and clothing shelves and have added district-wide free breakfast and free fresh fruit and vegetable snacks. We've added voluntary pre-K and Pathway 2 scholarships, which provide early education and intervention to our students. We have been a proud and loud advocate for our students' families, hosting numerous community, immigration, and housing forums. We have hosted and sponsored multiple district equity events, directly making equity statements and practicing equity behaviors with our students, families, and our community.
Doesn't matter if you're mentoring staff of color or promoting social justice. None of this matters when this is the result.
We are not afraid. We are not afraid to make difficult and challenging decisions that without all the information could certainly lead to equity questions. We cut our Avid program. It was a controversial and difficult decision to do so. Avid is known to be a successful program that frequently serves students of color. Nearly half a million dollars were previously invested in the Richfield Avid program beyond the teacher and staffing, but participants showed a graduation rate for African-American and Latino students below the rate of those who had not participated. We pulled out of the WMEP collaborative. We made this decision at the same time as other districts Columbia Heights and Brooklyn Center, two small, progressive, diverse districts. We believed at the time and our findings showed that these beliefs to be accurate, that we can access the WMEP programming that we feel we need and value à la carte while adding innocent classroom equity using the same funds. As a district, you will hear us say clearly and we are very proud of our equity work. I also want you to hear us to say that we have a long road to go and we are up to the challenge and want your support as we move forward. So you may be here for more than equity work. You may be here for reasons concerning free speech or the Black Lives Matter movement. I'm a believer in free speech and a lifelong free speech advocate. One of the great benefits of a highly diverse leadership team is their multiple perspectives. Our highly diverse and opinionated leadership team openly engages in sharing multiple perspectives that show our clear commitment to experiencing discomfort and I value the different opinions that our team members bring to the district. Each voice is valued and heard regardless of title or position. Beyond the professional, I want to share further. I grew up personally in a home where the social platform of justice was free speech. I grew up in a family bookstore and my father is a locally and nationally awarded and known bookseller, publisher, book reviewer, and more importantly. Okay, I can definitively tell you that the Richfield Public Schools and our, and our leadership did not ban political shirts. We did not ban Black Lives Matter shirts in January and no staff members. No staff members, no staff members have been disciplined formally or informally for advocacy related to Black Lives Matter. If you'd like to walk down our halls on any given day, likely including today, you would likely see Black Lives Matter shirts and other statements of support for social justice and student advocacy on the clothing of both children and adults. So you may also be here for the recent blog post to show your advocacy for social justice. We're proud and impressed with the dedication of your voice and the spirit with which you are here. I can definitively reassure you that the accounts that have been shared are inaccurate and we have taken steps to objectively confirm. What has transpired and the accuracy of how it is being described by consulting with multiple individuals. Belief in this account requires the false assumption that despite not organizing an event and not wearing Black Lives Matter shirts, the mere mention of these things set off the course of astounding deplorable actions. Belief in this account also requires ignoring that none of the employees involved in this situation alleged discrimination to any of their union leaders or district leadership team members until the posting. Belief in this account requires the false assumption that our administration and board would support a recommendation for termination based on the subjective information provided in the blog posting rather than the actual objective documentation validated by multiple individuals used for the administrative recommendation before the board tonight. If I were reading that blog post without additional information or multiple perspectives, I would be concerned too. I can assure you that what has been portrayed is not what's taking place and that no staff member is or has been punished or terminated for any reasons associated to student advocacy. Support for Black Lives Matter or what is.
Where's your three minutes?
So I support social justice and so does our board. So to conclude, I want to welcome.
Please allow us to continue our meeting. This is a regular part of our meeting. Thank you.
So to conclude, I want to welcome you again to Richfield Public Schools. We welcome your presence in our district now and we welcome it again in the future.
So move on to facility study.
Okay, good evening. Um, I'm pleased to share with Ryan Hoffman and Pat Overham, who are here to update um, the board as well as the community on our facility study. As the board knows, this is something that's been going on since about a year ago, um, where they've conducted a survey of all of our facilities, gone through, looked at our infrastructure needs, met with parents and community members as well as staff to assess and understand the needs of the community and the needs of our schools. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan Hoffman and Pat Overham.
Madam Chair, I, I ask if, if we can't continue with the meeting as scheduled, it's been publicly scheduled in order. We would like to go through it in order, please. If we, if, if we're interrupted, I, I ask that we take a recess.
Okay, so could you please allow them to continue? This is the order of our agenda. We amended it to allow people to speak and now this is the next item on our agenda. We would greatly appreciate it if you would show them respect and allow them to speak.
Thanks very much for having us here tonight. We'll be brief in our update, but we'll go through this presentation.
This is an update based on our, our January board meeting. Uh, we've done some work as far as the facility analysis and, and study goes. Uh, quick overview of what we've done. Um, the, the physical assessments to each of the buildings has been complete to this point. Surveys of, surveys for the staff on building use and condition and intended use are 99% complete. That, uh, just leaving it 100% complete at this point because we do have one final step to go to, which we'll get to. We have conducted community and other stakeholder input sessions, discussion sessions, along with an option creators stakeholder committee. That also is about 95%. Again, we have one more meeting to finish there. We are in the process of developing solution considerations based on criteria from the staff and administration um, as well as community and business city partners. Again, not quite 100% complete because we have one more meeting to go. We have developed budgets and potential funding strategies for the board to consider. Some of that you'll see tonight. Most you'll see in about a month when we come back with our final recommendation from Option Creators. Again, a 95% complete. And then the ultimate goal is to implement a long-range plan based on your facilities in the month of June. The Option Creator Group that we've, I've been mentioning was created to place a framework of priorities around drivers and, and scopes for your facilities as they move forward. That group came together, it's comprised of about 30 different individuals, mostly administration, some staff. administration, some staff, principals, and also community members. Their task was to create some priority levels in how to assess the different possibilities, what could happen in your facilities moving forward in a long-range plan. Each individual item that's going to be completed in a school or a district-wide implementation would have to fit into a certain priority driver, as we call. They developed these priority drivers. There's seven of them. They're ranked in order here, meaning that the top is the most important driver, the bottom is, we'll call it the least important driver, but noting that these drivers are all important in their decision as they look at facilities' options moving forward. So infrastructure deferred maintenance, that is the nuts and bolts of the building. Heating systems, carpets, flooring, ceilings, parking lots, mechanical, electrical systems, things like that. That was their number-one priority driver. They wanted to make sure that the district is taking care of those needs first. Next is safety and security. Obviously, you've done a lot in that regards, meaning updating buildings to make sure that as public comes in, that the students and staff inside the building are secure, having check-ins, things like that, but they want to take that a step further. That's the second priority driver. Core space is defined as all the big spaces within a building, meaning gyms, cafeterias, kitchens, hallways, all the community-type spaces. That was their third priority driver. Department-specific would be specific educational departments, science department, math department, special education, things like that. Community then is the next, meaning what gets the community into the building so that they can use and take advantage of all the facilities that are available. Collaboration is a driver based on both student collaboration during the instructional day, but also then collaboration with the community at night, and how do those two things function, and how do the buildings function to make sure that collaboration is achieved. And then program continuity is a driver that basically says that they want educational programs to make sure they flow all the way from kindergarten instruction or pre-K all the way up to high school programs, and that they match. For instance, STEM programming at the middle school would have a continuing program through the high school and be implemented that way. So those are the priority drivers, so any needs or opportunities we looked at with the staff have to fit in each one of those different buckets, if you will.
So this format is very difficult to read on the PowerPoint, and that's actually fine for our discussion tonight. I just wanted to talk a little bit how the scope outline process has evolved over time, and you saw a revision of that at your last work session. Again, all of the needs were identified and quantified. Drivers were established and organized from a priority standpoint. Each need within the district, whether it was a physical need or a programmatic need, was categorized by those drivers and refined accordingly. The first pass of that was done from a very literal standpoint. If you recall, at our last meeting, we went through those different scenarios. Once that was done, we worked back with that Option Creators Group to take a look at each line item specifically, to see if there were any items that stuck out and warranted further discussion and potential adjustment or refinement. That process has taken place and was part of the report back to you just last month. From there, we're looking at an outcome of that last work session was kind of a directive from the board for us to circle back with the Option Creators to further refine and kind of finalize their work by a real fine-tuning of this document. So as directed, we've continued to work through those different options. If you recall, that last spreadsheet had many, many different columns associated with each driver. What you see here is really the next iteration of that, and we just wanted to share this tonight as an example format. All of the scope items remain consistent. The blue column really represents kind of what we would now define as base improvements. The next green column, we've established as additional considerations or additional improvements for consideration or further discussion. So we've started to pull together homework that will ultimately go to that Option Creator circle back, if you will.
Do we have this scope outline? Was this sent out?
The PowerPoint.
Yep, it's done by PowerPoint. We can certainly send that out to you so you have it. Again, it's a work in progress and probably outdated. Those are going to carry down. We are still working within the same framework from an overall priority driver, tax impact standpoint, those things as we discussed at the last work session. Again, that hasn't changed. We're still looking at working within those targets and those ranges. Next steps, as directed, we're certainly going to go back and realign and refine things with the Options Creators. We're going to look at developing that final Option Creator recommendation to you as a board. We'll establish that follow-up work session with you to go through that in another level of detail. On a parallel track, the community survey will be conducted, and so we'll be waiting anxiously for those results to be integrated with this. And that'll all roll together hopefully by early to mid-June. We'll be working with you to see how those two mesh and integrate. So again, a very quick update tonight, but we wanted to at least let you know things aren't standing still, and we're continuing to refine and narrow things down.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
I would say just a quick highlight. So the status right now, there is a community survey that is out there specific to the facility study. We are anticipating that information back by the end of the month with the opportunity to share that information at the beginning of June and kind of move this work forward with another review by the Facility Study Committee.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have an athletics presentation by Mr. Boy.
Evening. I'm here just to update you on progress we've made in terms of some of the discussion we had this winter in regards to our change in start times and its effect on athletics and co-curriculars. And so I provided in your board packet, there's a spreadsheet. A lot of that information, still estimates. We're still finishing up our fall schedules at this time, so they're not complete. So some of that stuff is still... In terms of numbers of early releases, some of the practice times, some of those are still estimated, and some of that stuff has been set and firmed up depending on what we go. So that information is on there for you to see. Second thing we're working on is looking at kind of creative ways to use that time before school in terms of practice and what that would mean and possibilities. So working with coaches in terms of things that they might want to do before school, in terms of optional activities and how that might enhance us, so working with them on that. Third, looking at our outside facilities, and that was a big issue this winter when we went through that process, is looking at what the effect would be on our programs that use outside facilities and rental times. Those things, none of that has been set. Most of those, again, were winter. So again, we just still have verbal commitments from each of those that they will... that they'll provide the time, you know, that we need to do that. And then did work with the TRAP team in terms of one of our independent providers, in terms of what it means to their program. So I sat with their coach and went through possibilities. He, I gave him a bunch of possibilities. We talked about what things might look like, options that he's going to have to take back and work with the club on what that would look like in terms of would we have the possibility to move to more Sunday times, or, you know, can we, you know, adjust our time a little bit to go through those? So those are the things that we've been working on. You've got the update. I'm really here, just want to answer questions, anything that has come up since then to update you.
I think one part of the information that I would be interested in, you separate out early release and projected early releases, but with the later start time, I would be interested in knowing how much longer that release time is, so if they're missing more than one full class as opposed to in the past maybe missing part of one class?
Yep. Yeah, I mean, we could look at those. Like I said, all the estimates I've used, there's, you know, I looked at the number of, tried to look at the number of early releases we had this year and what time, and then projected out, you know, without having firm bus time, saying, well, if the school is getting out 40 minutes later, projecting that the time we'd have to go is 40 minutes. I don't see that being reality. I think, you know, in terms of as we go look forward at what, when do we really need to get out? Our coaches do a great job right now of making sure our kids are staying in class as much as possible and limiting those times and time away from class. That will continue to be our mission and motivation in terms of those things. I mean, there will be, obviously, we talked about, there will be more early releases. They will be longer, you know, when we have to do them. But the other part, working with other schools that have done this, is this, you know, it's a good time to really look at how much warm-up time do we need? You know, what does that really look like? How can we encourage kids to get to the bus as quick as possible and helping them be more efficient in those things? So if we can find different ways to squeeze that time down and, again, keep our kids in class as much as possible, so... But I can certainly look at those times. And again, as we go forward, we'll have a better idea of how much time that is. For example, cross-country, if they're getting out this year at 2:30 and missing the last 10 minutes of class, I would project that if they're getting out at 2:30 now, that, you know, we're looking at 50 minutes, another 50, so...
Dave, is it fair to say that the co-ops are the harder ones to project because we're working with another building and their release time is, or does it just take longer? Or is hockey tied to a specific...
We don't have ice times yet. You know, that's, we're not in a position right now in terms of, I have a lot more to do with the co-op with Southwest Christian Academy. Right now, we're still trying to schedule our games. Once we kind of have those game schedules, then we'll sit down probably early fall and look at practice schedules. Again, everyone's aware of our later start times. I've had those conversations with Holy Angels in terms of, you know, what does that look like for our students and your, you know, and your time and how to make that work. Again, he's told me that, you know, they're certainly, they enjoy working with us, they want our kids, they need our kids, and they're going to do whatever they can to make that work for us, so...
One more item. You'd mentioned, maybe folks getting creative, thinking about how to use the morning time. I was under the impression, one of the advantages maybe of the later start was an opportunity to eliminate a zero hour, right, where transportation is harder for, you know, you're getting to school before the buses run for some students is harder, and so I would be wary of a significant use or more than once a week kind of thing by a team for essentially still a zero hour.
Yeah, absolutely, and I probably misspoke on that. When we're looking at before-school times, and I've sent that out to coaches and they understand, anything we're looking at, that would be optional in terms of, you know, whether kids could make it. The only request I've had firmed up right now would be soccer. They do Friday conditioning instead of having a regular practice, and so he was wondering and trying to figure out if doing that before school makes, you know, makes sense for his kids. That's, again, he wants to be a point where kids are going to be there, they're able to be there, and certainly he knows that if we're not going to have as many kids there, it certainly wouldn't be mandatory, but certainly something the kids would use and like to say, I'm going to go before school on Friday and have my Friday afternoons off, so...
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boy.
Move Jesse's motion!
So, and finally, we move...
Move Jesse's motion! Move Jesse's motion! Move Jesse's motion!
I request that you allow us to continue our meeting.
Move Jesse's motion! Move Jesse's motion!
Thank you. We move on to commendations.
We have three commendations on the board agenda tonight. Christina Kelly, mother of Richfield High School senior. Taylor Kelly wrote in this appreciation of German teacher Elizabeth Zenfening. Thank you for the experience of a lifetime being able to have students from Germany stay with us and then send Taylor to Germany. It was an experience that she will never forget, nor will I. I was so at ease sending her with her teacher because she is such a caring person and knows everything there is to know about taking these lucky children to Germany, she is a gem. Dean Brewer received an email from the National DECA Organization informing him that for the first time in our school's history, we have four DECA students who passed the rigorous National School-Based Enterprises Certification exam and are now individually certified. In addition to the certification, six straight years earned by our Spartan Avenue School Store. Dean says, as a member of the National SBE Advisory Council, I can tell you that our statistics suggest that perhaps less than 40%, maybe more or less for any given year, passed this exam. So this is a high achievement for these four individuals. Congratulations to Jack Bowers, Peter Hamilton, Brady Julian, and Matty Lennon. And finally, Richfield Middle School teacher Nate Edwards applied for and received the Teachers and Technology Grant from the century-linked Clark M. Williams Foundation in the amount of $4,225. The middle school will be using the money for a laser cutter. Congratulations to Nate.
Thank you. And finally, we move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion?
Move Jesse's motion! 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 Move Jesse's motion!
Please allow us to continue the meeting. Please allow us to continue the meeting. I appreciate those that have taken the time to share their concern and support of equity and inclusiveness in Richfield Public Schools. Concerns by all are taken seriously. We have read emails, listened to voice messages, we have asked questions, and all perspectives have been considered on these issues. Superintendent Onavsky has continually informed me on the issues. I've reviewed the disciplinary documentation with the District Human Resources Department. After full consideration, it is clear the administration has followed our board policies for discipline and termination. This is my... Please allow us to continue our meeting.
Jesse states! Jesse states!
If you do not stop, we will recess.
Jesse states! Jesse states! Jesse states!
If you do not stop, we will recess. We are going to recess if you do not stop. We will recess if you do not stop and allow us to continue our meeting. That said, we will continue to self-reflect on equity and inclusiveness work in the district.
We are going to tell the families who are only African.
We are going to recess for 10 minutes until we can have quiet and allowed to continue on our meeting. Thank you. I call this meeting back to order. We are going to move forward with our meeting.
Better time.
All right, one more. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I am Latino. I have been with Jesse. I have been with the district. I have never experienced any racism in this district. Actually, I have been, feel inspired, empowered, and excelled. I also witness that she was as well as me, inspired, empowered, and excelled. I think things have been all a trope, worship. I don't think, and there is no place, and I guarantee you, in this district, place won't have racism.
She's going, she's Latino, I'm Latino.
She's saying that she's helped her a lot and she's done so much for her.
It doesn't matter why she was fired. She's too valuable.
Who's answering the phone for now that Jackie's got? So who's taking care of all the Hispanic families that are not English speakers? Who's answering? Who's helping them?
Last night, they aren't here.
Move Jesse's motion! 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 Move Jesse's motion!
Thank you.
If staff couldn't get fired, there would be more staff here. I'm in St. Paul schools, there's hundreds of staff who have experienced a culture of fear there. We're not going to let it come to Richfield.
Get them out.
Leave my example, not intimidation.
Okay, I call this meeting back to order. I would appreciate it if you would give us... I would appreciate it if you would give us the respect to allow us to continue our meeting, to make our motions and to make our votes. If you continue to disrupt the meeting, then I will have to call another recess and we will have to ask you to leave. So that's fine.
Why not just appease all of the people?
So we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Tensing.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
Boo! What do we want? Jesse's job. When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Jesse's job!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Jesse's job!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Jesse's job!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Jesse's job!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Jesse's job!
When do we want it?
Now!
Be brave. It's legally within the...
Madam Chair, I will second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Paulus. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What do we want?
Any opposed?
Now! Jesse's job!
Okay, we are in recess. This meeting is recessed. Okay, I'm calling this meeting back to order. We have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda. We have a second on the table to approve the consent agenda, a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. All in favor?
Roque!
If you be quiet, I will ask each individual member to vote. Allow us to continue our meeting. So if you are in favor, please say aye.
Roque!
Let me finish.
Roque! 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 Roque!
Since we can't hear, all in favor, please show...
Roque! 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 All of them. Y'all about to lose your job!
All have voted aye, and the motion passes. The consent agenda has passed.
Shame on you! Shame on you! Shame on you!
We move on to the whole business.
Shame on you! 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 All time, no one! 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 All time, no one!
I'm calling a recess. We'll be leaving the room.
Madam Chair, I would move that we table the remaining agenda items with the exception of items 6A and 6D.
Okay.
I will second the motion by Mr. Paulus.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Tensing to table the other items on the agenda except for item 6A and 6D. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
We'll be back.
So we move on to new business preliminary budget authorization.
We'll be back! We'll be back!
All right.
We'll be back!
All right.
We'll be back!
Who's presenting?
We'll be back! We'll be back!
Mr. Holgy.
Thank you. I have for your review tonight the preliminary budget as well as a request for advanced expenditure authorization based on that budget. The actual budget will come to you on June 12th, but we're requesting the approval to spend up to 30% of next year's projected budget prior to that adopted budget.
We'll be back!
Craig, that is just the pre-authorization before the budget's finalized to allow the school to do its startup purchasing?
Correct. It is the authorization to expand up to 30% of that budget prior to the adopted budget on June 12th.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I will move, you know what? I am very sorry. I'll have to apologize. I'm not prepared to make the motion because I didn't...
Madam Chair, I'll move the item as recommended.
Can I please, Mr. Holgy, can you please restate the information?
Yes, so in the board packet, there's the preliminary budget. The final, recommended final budget will be coming to you on June 12th. We're recommending authorization, requesting authorization to expand up to 30% of next year's projected budget prior to June 12th when the board adopts that final budget for this current year, or for next year. So do you want me to restate that?
I've got it. Thank you. Madam Chair, I will move that we authorize the budget.
I actually did that. Sorry, Peter. I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the motion passes. We will move on to termination and non-renewal of probationary teaching contracts, and again, we have Mr. Holgy.
Thank you. We have two additional probationary non-renewals that we're requesting authorization for tonight. Our requirement is that we notify teachers prior to June 1 of their probationary non-renewals. The board took action at the first meeting in May for most of those probationary non-renewals, but we have two additionals that are added here tonight, so we're asking for your authorization on that.
I will move the resolution.
I'll second the resolution.
So we have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any discussion? This is a resolution, so we will pull the board. Ms. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing.
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead.
Aye.